Seven oh three. Thanks, Jesse. I almost forgot. All right, welcome everybody to the November fifteenth. Town Board Business Meeting and first public hearing on the twenty twenty four budget. I'll open the meeting with the pledge to the flag. All right, so I will begin with the public hearing and. After the public hearing and proceed to the business meeting, which will be preceded by privilege of the floor if anybody wishes to address the board. So without further ado, I will open the public hearing on the. Twenty twenty four Caroline budget. And I'll begin that by giving a brief. Presentation of the budget, the preliminary budget. Yeah, so I will begin to share my screen. And for people in the town hall, it will require. Neck craning to see that. So.
Another screen right there.
Yeah, I think that would be. Right there.
Yeah.
I think having another monitor might be a good idea. So, all right, so. We. Decided upon a. Three point two percent. Salary and wage increase based on the twelve month cost of living increase. So these are the public official salaries that we established for twenty twenty four. At a three point two percent increase. So I I won't read them off. They're three point two percent greater than they were this year. So there are no, no other changes in that regard. This one is the. My slide on how property taxes are determined. And so you. Come up with an estimate of. The expenses that you expect for the next year and the revenues and the differences what needs to be made up. By the taxes levied townwide. And that may be buffered as we've done. By past tax income. By by reserves. So those are unrestricted reserves that aren't committed to anything else. So the tax levy equals the expenditures minus the revenues. Minus whatever the board decides to apply a fund balance. And as everybody knows, I think since two thousand eleven, New York State's tax cap limits annual growth. In the tax levy to the lector of two percent or the rate of inflation. So. And if a town. Raises this levy above that, yeah, you can you pass a local law to override the tax gap.
How long, how do they determine the rate of inflation? Do they use?
They they have a form. So the and then the the other critical element of. Of your taxes is the total assessed value and I I I wanted to mention this because everybody. Not, I don't know if it was everybody, but a lot of people. Got increased assessments this year. I know we did and. So they do that, the assessment department, we have a county assessor. And they are constantly working to. You know, keep everybody's assessment approximately on par with with their neighbors. And so. Once, once the town board decides on the amount of money we need. That is divided up across the town in in into the. The assessed value of each property. So. I I guess I'm. I heard someone say that, well, the assessor is just trying to increase revenue. But the the assessor is actually not increasing revenue one cent. There, it it seems like they are. But they're they're just increasing, you know, or modifying the assessed value of the properties. And then we distribute the the tax levy amount across that. So it's the town board that. Is responsible for the amount of money that's levied to the town. So, did I confuse the issue sufficiently?
There is a simpler way to describe that is. The tax, your house is assessed at X. If you do not raise the tax. A dollar amount you need. The tax levy rate actually drops per thousand. On that, but as you raise your level, then the rate comes back up. So your tax. A two hundred thousand dollar property should be the same as a hundred and seventy. From one year to the next, because the value went up, but the rate.
Yeah, if they if they.
So, right, a lot of people don't understand how that works.
And the other thing about the assessments, the assessments are done like this year. But they don't apply to this year's taxes, right? So they they're hands off on this year's taxes. They go for the next years. So that's why, you know, then then the amount of money that the town board decides that we need is. Is divided up amongst that, so. So, great, thank you. All right, so. Here is. iPad, that sounds familiar. So the. These are the appropriations for the general fund and the highway fund and those combined. So the expenditures. The revenues. And then the proposed applied fund balance is the third row down. And that, that the. The appropriations minus the revenues minus the applied fund balance equals the amount. We're seeking to raise in twenty twenty four. So you can see that when you look at the combined amounts. We're looking at to raise one point, well. One million eight hundred five thousand eight hundred ninety three compared to one million seven hundred three thousand five hundred fifty nine. In twenty three, that's a four point one seven percent increase. So the total assessed value is shown in the bottom two, in the bottom, the. Second to bottom row, you can see. Total assessed value in the town. The assessor and new properties resulted in almost a twenty percent increase in total assessed value in the town. And then when you divide the. Amount to be raised into that total assessed value, you come up with the tax rate. So you can see. It's kind of what you're talking about, Matt, that the. The tax rate per thousand is decreases by minus twelve point five percent. And what happens on your individual house or property is it depends on. How your assessment, if it did change or didn't, it might not have so, so. So this shows expenditures for a lot of the general fund things for the town board, the court. Supervisor clerk town hall, safety inspection, highway administration. Garage, that's supportive highway, youth services and benefits. I will just point out notable things, nothing really notable, except that, I mean, the highest one is benefits. And that's typical, healthcare always goes up more than almost anything else, so eight point three percent increase. For healthcare. The highway budget highlights twenty three to twenty four also, so that's divided into road repair. General road repair, road, road capital improvements. Machinery miscellaneous snow removal and benefits, and again, as you can see, benefits. Up. By twenty three point seven percent. So that's not just because healthcare went up, it's also I under budgeted that line last. Year, so it's a bigger jump to to get it where it should be this year. The road repair is. Is not real, that negative forty four percent is a result of the Accrus Road Project. So that. Expenditure line is in the road repair. Budget, and so that that comes out because that project's done. So that was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that comes right out. It it doesn't, it has a matching revenue line, so it's 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 like a net zero in the whole budgets, but. It makes it look like road repairs going dramatically down next year when when it's not really, so. I put this slide in to. Just illustrate that health, the insurance is is kind of a big deal, so. Twenty five percent change again, partly because we under budgeted last year, twenty five percent increase in health insurance. The premium amounts are increasing by. Six point eight to eight percent, so that's a lot too. Property insurance thirteen point seven percent, workers' comp, negative seven percent, that's a result of. Yeah, that's workers' comp and I think workers' comp for the fire department, I. I adjusted that because the fund balance was high, so.
And and we've had a good experience rating. We haven't had many acts, so.
Yeah, lately we've done well, yeah. This slide shows the town reserve funds that we have, and this is, so for the highway garage. The balance as of today is about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And we we. Our tradition is to budget sixty five thousand towards that each year, and we usually don't spend on it, so it usually goes into the reserve fund, so. Available for that will be four hundred fifty five thousand. Next year. It's down a little bit this year because we. Let's see, oh, yeah, well, we used it for the La Bella.
Right.
Project this year. That didn't come out of that, though, I don't think. I don't think.
That came out of garage.
Yeah. So for the town hall reserve fund, we're at a hundred and nine thousand dollars and we have. Thirty thousand remaining for this year, so that'll go up. By thirty thousand at the end of the year, I'll need to do that at the. Next business meeting and then we need to do that. And then we budgeted thirty thousand again next year, so I have about a hundred and seventy available. For town hall projects. And then highway equipment. The highway equipment reserve is is now. Now at zero and the expenditure line is at zero, so the twenty twenty four. Amount, we budgeted two hundred thousand is what's available for two thousand twenty four.
Mark, can I just add that? Regarding reserve funds, what isn't reflected in the budget? Are the funds that we have set aside from ARPA? That we've designated towards ProVAN, is that correct?
Okay, and what do you say about them?
I'm saying that they're not included in this chart, reserve funds are separate, they're not in the budget.
They're not shown there, that's correct, yep. Uh, this is some. The about ten year fund balance history. So you can see, we've maintained a fairly steady fund balance. For the highway and the general fund, it's just under a million dollars. Okay. So technically, that conclude, oh, wait, so that's that's my presentation on. The. On the general and highway fund. So. I wonder how we should do this. Maybe I will now open the public hearing. If anybody would like to make a comment about. That part of the budget for the highway and the general fund. And let me know, Jesse, if anybody raises their hand. I don't have my participants screen up.
No hands.
Nothing, okay. We'll see no hands there or here. I will close. Close the public hearing on the highway and general. Fund budgets and open the public hearing on the Caroline Fire Protection District. Again, I, this shows the comparison between twenty three and twenty four. There are some differences here. So. Speedsville Volunteer Fire. Their budget for this, for twenty four is increasing about ten thousand dollars. And that's because of a truck that they are repairing and. And they're also. Establishing a capital, you know. Reserve for an impending purchase, I think, within the next couple of years, so. That's an eighteen percent increase, which is unusual. So, that's Speedsville. And. To clear, so Speedsville Volunteer Fire and Brookton Dale provides, they, we contract with them. To serve our Caroline Fire Protection District. So, these are the contract amounts that they are requesting, so Brookton Dale. Their budget request is flat. It's the same as it was in twenty three at twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And there's the decrease in the the Speedsville Workers' Comp. That I mentioned earlier, so no fund balance was applied. So with that increase of. For Speedsville, the tax tax levy increases by about six thousand dollars, seven point five percent. Total set value fourteen percent. So the tax rate. Decreases by about twelve point four percent. So. And this shows about a ten year history of the fund balance for the Fire Protection District, so. So with that, I will close the public hearing on the Caroline Fire Protection District. And. Offer further explanation that. The Caroline Fire Protection District does not cover all of Caroline. It covers mostly the southeast part quadrant, so Slaterville Fire and Brookton Dale Fire have their own. Separate. They're just like the town, they're their own separate taxing entities, so they they have their own board of commissioners. And so that they've already had their public hearings and have established their budgets for that, so that's. That's a separate thing from, that's non-town. So it's kind of complicated. So. Are there any, are there any comments or questions about the fire protection? Budget, anything on your end, Jesse, anybody?
All good. On Zoom.
Thank you. So I'll close the public hearing for the Caroline Fire Protection District. And then move on, I'll open the public hearing or the, well, go onto the presentation and then I'll open the public hearing, so the. Presentation for the Caroline Streetlight District. Is you can see that I kept the budget flat. And that's a mistake, that should be zero there. Forgot to update it. Zero percent change. And so you can see total set value increases by eleven percent. And the tax rate decreases by about fifty five. Percent. And the, here's the fund balance history for streetlights, which. Admittedly is kind of wonky, and the reason it has a spike is because we. We budgeted money in there for the. For the purchase of streetlights and the streetlight project. And so. Yeah, that should, that should come back down as we. As we smoothed out the budget, so you can see it's it's fine. So with that, I will. Close the public hearing on the streetlights.
No, I haven't had it yet.
Sorry, I haven't had it. I have to open it first, so I open it, I can't keep things straight. So open the public hearing for streetlights, so. Anybody wants to comment or? Ask questions?
Should it be solar or?
Sorry? Oh, the streetlights are LED. So, yeah, so we, that was the project we did, all the streetlights were converted to LEDs.
So they're not.
Ni-Seg or they're solar?
What, what's that?
Solar or Ni-Seg?
Who's who's supplying the electricity?
Oh, Ni-Seg. Ni-Seg is supplying the electricity, yeah. I got you.
But they don't own them anymore.
So, yeah, so we. Before we started the project, Ni-Seg owned the. The hardware that the streetlights are on. And you you paid, we paid for every street light every month, like a little fee, like seven dollars and fifty cents. It was a lot.
Whether it worked or not.
Yeah, and it's just like an arm that holds the light and everything, so we have like, you know. Seventy, eighty streetlights, that adds up quickly, so. The Clean Energy Coordinator, Terry Carroll, he he's the one that explained this, and and also Casey, that. The big advantage to doing this is if you own the streetlights, if you take that away and. You know, the downside is you have to provide maintenance, but you can contract for a much lower cost than I say. Is charging, so we did that, we purchased the streetlights. Plus, that's a huge, huge savings.
Plus, the expected, the life expectancy of these new lights is.
Right.
Thirty years.
So that plus the energy savings, that's in addition. To just removing this maintenance fee that that Ni-Seg. Charges, so now we own them. And.
You were able to do grants for some.
Darling, now we own them.
Sorry, then?
Were you able to do grants for some of that purchase?
We were, so the. The Clean Energy Community Grant that we got. Paid for most of that project, I think all of it, so we got a hundred thousand dollar grant. To do that, that project, so that was. That was a win-win, so. Yeah, that just, that just got wrapped up, it it took forever to. Basically, you would be surprised to get the final invoice from the New York Power Authority, so we contracted with them to to do the.
Now, what does it cost per light? Per month for the electricity usage? What what's the bill now, instead of seven dollars a light, what is it for?
Well, so now there's no charge like that, I I I would have to look up, I mean, we we contract now. For streetlight maintenance, but I I will look that up.
I said it's gonna charge you.
The bill is way down.
Yeah.
Right, it's like ten percent.
So, but yeah, I, it's a good question, because I think that's a good selling point to.
I mean, just off the top of my head, it's like, the bill's like ten percent of what it was.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's about right, it's it's.
Yeah, the college just went through this year and did every light on campus, I believe. And put all new LEDs in. And they show up better. And it's supposed to save them a bunch.
Yeah.
We did it ahead of them.
Yeah, and.
Probably, there's no saying what electric rates are going to do in the future. But.
Well, but that's, you know, you're still better off with LED, right?
Yeah, correct.
And the other really nice feature is that. They they have these cellular communicators on them, the streetlights, so you can monitor them. When they go out. The maintenance people can see that and respond immediately, so I know in the past, like working with Cindy. I mean, she was pulling her hair out because she had a laundry list of streetlights that were out. They were never getting fixed, I mean, it was literally taking way more than a year. So now that should. Vastly improved.
Or you could, you can dim them. There's the one at Beesman Road in seventy nine, and Cindy never liked that one being real bright, because. Part of which is a snowplow driver, you were looking for the headlights coming up around the curve, and if that streetlight was too bright, you couldn't see it, so. Now you can still have a streetlight there, but you can dim it down.
Speaking of bright lights, not to, but the one on the corner of the building. Pointed at the flag. Needs to be put at a different angle, because when you come down seventy nine at night like this, it is.
Okay.
Right in your eyes, coming this way, so try it some night.
Okay. We can work on that, right, Tom?
Yeah, when we have, and it's either. Even free or didn't work. It's it's been there for a long time and. Oh, it's just, it's just froze up.
But but that that, you know, I come down the road and you just, so just try it some night, take a look. Because it shines, it's like right in your eyes. Down the road.
I've never noticed that, just again, lower than.
Well. Voice car truck, I mean, it's all of a sudden, you've got that light, and you've got headlights, and it's like. It's getting hard to see.
That and the photocell doesn't work anymore, so it's on all day too, it doesn't need to be lit during the day.
And this is the one on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it just needs to be angled somehow differently. Because it's it's like it's pointing the road, that's all.
We'll get a bigger hammer or something, so.
I got one in the back of my truck.
Let me just, no, I just need a little general, oh, thank you.
All right, so I. Good conversation, any questions? Thank you. Anything else, Jesse? Seen buddy in Zoom land there?
No, nothing here, so just for the close.
Okay. I will close the the hearing on the streetlights unless anybody has come in, no, okay. Streetlights are closed and the public hearing on the streetlights. Budget. So this is my final slide, just showing the. The tax cap this year. And because we've. The last. Couple of years, we've kept the levy flat, so our tax cap's actually ten thousand dollars lower than it was last year. So. So the, where we set the preliminary budget now is about seven. Seventy nine hundred dollars below the tax cap. It's seventy thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars greater than the. Two thousand twenty three town levy amount. And so, and it's, it's almost at the tax cap, it's negative, below it by negative four percent, so by four percent. So that is. The presentation, the public hearings. On the the budgets are now closed. And so I will open the town.
Light district, candlelight district.
What's that?
Candlelighting district is closed.
And, yeah, I I use plural, so just the, yeah, and. So open the business meeting and I'll go see if anybody signed up. Okay, next.
I'm gonna sit for this, if you don't mind, and I will be after my comments. So. Weekend, ten days ago-ish, it was on a Friday night. I ended up. I ended up having a medical issue, hit the floor like a rock. Out for a while. Wife had to. Manage my airway because I had. Had an issue with it. And I came to, she was working on getting hold of nine-one-one. Anywhere from ten to twenty minutes, I laid on the floor. There is no EMS in this town. The county's plan, I don't care where you put a vehicle anywhere. You're fifteen, twenty minutes away. I did get, we did get an ambulance. I'm luckier than most. I. Am married to a critical care EMT, and if you don't know what that means, is one step below a paramedic. So she was calm, cool, handled the situation. Ambulance came. Off the hospital I go. Figured out part of the problems, who knows what else is going on. But. My concern laying there was not for myself. But for her having to deal with the situation by herself. How many other people in this town? Have any training? Have any knowledge of what to do in these situations and wait ten, fifteen, twenty minutes? Nobody. We're very few, very few. There needs to be something done on a town level. The town needs to support it, and I am myself. Strapped for cash financially, but I am willing to pay more taxes to do something town level. To provide some type of an EMS response, instead of waiting for the county to do it. Instead of waiting for them to be twenty minutes away because they're on the other side of Danby. Responding over there and they're not here. As we age. This will happen to all of us at some point in time. It it's the gray hair. We're gonna have issues. Whether we get bit now or ten years from now or next week. We don't know. And if you think that Bangs is gonna be close because you're down in Brooktondale or something else, I had Dryden. Because they were the only ones available. Dryden ambulance has actually been on Ithaca College campus because Banes isn't available. So we cannot rely on outside agencies. We will never have an ambulance in this town again. But we need to really seriously think about doing something. To provide this service for our community. It can be partially paid, partially volunteer, and I'm sure there's a way to work it out. But the amount of time that we've spent on other projects in this town, some of which some of us feel aren't necessary. And the cost of could be spent as well researching this and doing something locally. And I hope you guys consider this, because everybody here's got gray hair. So this is coming for all of us.
I don't.
You're perfect.
And he hears perfectly.
Yeah, he hears perfectly too. So just keep this in mind in the next months, coming up with what's going on in the world. You could be next. Your spouse could be next. Can they deal with you being on the floor? Unconscious. And by the way, I was laying in a puddle of my own piss. Because I went that far down. It was no fun. And I've been around this, and I'm not shy or bashful about saying it. It happens. Can you handle your spouse being down and doing that? Or them be you being down? And them handling your situation? For fifteen or twenty minutes. Not five or seven, which a local response would most likely get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, um. Is there anyone um that wishes to speak? Uh, on on the Zoom meeting? Jesse?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I will uh. Move on to my supervisor's report. Um. The uh. Speedville Community Center will host another second informational meeting. With Egio Thermal about the Speedville Thermal Network feasibility study on Tuesday, November twenty-eight. At the um. At seven PM at the Speedville Community Center, um and that will be also by Zoom, so people can attend by Zoom. Um, and using, you can get the Zoom link on the homepage of the town website. Um. So I've been working with Aaron DeBolt, who lives in Speedville, and we. Feel like it would be good to. To um have another meeting. Um, we do need, um, we're seeking. More energy use data on a particular homes um and the residents in in Speedville, so be working on that. So that's exciting and um. Jay Egg, who is the like the CEO of Egio Thermal, is a very charismatic and um. Really engaging. Uh, to listen to and and is is very excited about this project. Uh, I attended, uh, we're considering um. Some kind of software. For managing um. Uh, applications to the the code enforcement department. Um, so we um. I guess there's this cloud permit, which is a cloud-based system. Um, that um looks very compelling. We went, did a couple presentations. Um, by that group um. And um Jesse attended a another. Presentation by um another. Provider, so this is something that we're we're looking into. Uh, we got an email from. Um, New York State Deferred Compensation. That there's um offering an additional benefit. For employees to make voluntary contributions to Roth IRA accounts. Uh, so those are pre-tax um contributions they can make. Uh, beginning January first of next year. So um we need to um. We need to approve that, so I'd like to add that to the agenda for tonight, just a simple resolution. Approving that as an offering, so. And um then the the Ithaca Group that's been working on a source water protection plan. Um. For Ithaca drinking water. Um, so they're. Looking at with the engineer Barton and Liquidus. The engineering firm. Looking at uh stormwater considerations for large solar projects. So um we're planning. To meet soon to begin discussions. This is with like Darby Kylie. Rebecca Minus, um. Roxy Johnson, um, so. Um. I attended a roundtable hosted by Assemblyman or Member Anna Kellis. On the companion bills that one of which she's sponsoring in the assembly, of course. For a chip-style uh funding model to support. Municipal uh medical emergency response. Um, and so I'll I am. Think we did this before, but I'm gonna offer another resolution. To support this, just to. Try to put some wind in the sails of the governor and other officials at the state level that to let them know how important we think this is. And as you know, there's an ongoing discussion about the um. The countywide rapid emergency uh rapid response, rapid emergency medical response plan. Um, so that looks, you know, that's very good. The the county did include that in their budget. Um, and so. There's an ongoing discussion for future years um about how to fund that um. How to fund that in a um. In a fair way, so. That's ongoing. I attended the Speedsville's uh the Volunteer Fire Company's um November meeting earlier this month. Um, and I talked about that during the budget presentation, so. Um, and I just. Noted the. The meetings that the fire departments have are on um. Various Mondays of the month and are open to the public, if anybody wants to attend. And then my final um. Item is, as you all know, we did receive the Highway Facilities Project Report. Part from the Bella Engineering. Um, I know a couple of you have looked at it. I have not, um, but. We need to bear down on that and. I'm gathering we need to provide some. Constructive feedback to develop in the. Near term, so. Anyway, but yeah, I don't know, maybe. We can discuss that later.
Well, probably we should, we're gonna have to just ask LaBella to have a special meeting with us. Ask LaBella to have a special meeting with us to walk through the document. The. I mean, I'll just say that the. The cost thresholds are really quite. Um, to get your attention. And so we'll have to talk, be with them and talk about, I I anticipate. Yeah, how we might address that, et cetera, et cetera, but also just have them explain to us what the. It provides three options, and so it'd just be good to have them walk us through those three options.
Yeah. So maybe if if we could all look at it by. Early next week and. Schedule a meeting with them.
Yeah, sure.
And that that would be a public meeting. We'll just.
Yep.
See what works for them. So, okay, I think that I think we should do that.
Would it would it be reasonable to ask one of them to come down?
Say what?
Would it be reasonable to ask one of them to come down for in person?
Hell, yeah. If if they'd like to, um, I'd be happy if they did it by Zoom. I'm okay with that, but.
Yeah. I'm just stuck on the old-fashioned way.
You you'll want to get a piece of their skin, right?
The non-verbal communication.
I've always noticed your eyebrows, yeah, so.
That's why people trim.
So, yeah. I definitely am feeling like. I agree, we need to engage with them, yeah. That's my report. Any questions or other things on your minds or? Things I forgot? All right, um, Jesse, do you have anything?
Uh, yep, I just wanted to mention that uh the Clerk's Office will be closed next Wednesday. Um, for the holiday, um. And that went out in the newsletter also, uh, but I just wanted to remind everybody. And um I'll also mention that tax season. Will officially be underway um the last week of November. And when information's available on. You know, where to pay, when the bill's coming and so forth. Um, I'll be sure to get that posted on the Town Clerk page on the town website, um hopefully around, you know. Early to mid-November or December, excuse me.
Okay, so you you said something to the, you said tax season.
Yep.
Would be open.
Yep.
Open in late November? That, is that what you meant? No?
Yep, you and I, we've got things we need to get to assessment.
Oh, right.
So it's 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 our work, that our preparations that will be will be starting. So.
Right. So the the public. The public should not have to, should not anticipate anything until the new year, correct?
That's right, that's right. And I just, I I just wanted to say that, you know, once. Information, I'll get some information together on, you know, just when people can expect to see their bill. And when they can go online and and just some of those details, I will post that on the Town Clerk page. Um, so that. Anybody has questions on it can can look there and hopefully get answers before. Before then.
Okay. Super, thank you. Anything else?
Um, well, I did note the October fees. Um. We collected three hunting licenses. One impoundment, forty-two dog renewals and ten building permits. And my report has been submitted to Mark. And along with the payment of those fees and the amount of one thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents. And that's my report.
Excellent. Thanks, Jesse. Um. Cliff, Cliff, I forwarded Cliff's uh report to you all today, um.
Yep.
So. Like that's the. Permits and everything. Are you?
Yeah.
Saying something here?
No, just not in my head.
Oh, okay, great. Any committee updates?
The Ithaca Tompkins County Transportation Council Planning Meeting is next Tuesday, and then they're gonna be having a. Kickoff meeting for the Safe Streets For All. That they're planning on having, so. So getting going on the finally, on the writing the plans, so I'm looking forward to that. They're they're scheduling that now. It'll happen in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
So all the municipalities will be. Um, meeting with the planners that were hired and and getting going on that, so. Um.
Great.
That's good. I was a little worried because I hadn't heard anything much about it. So I'm happy, happy things are moving there.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I'll just mention that I've been in touch with Guy about. He's going to revise sections ten and eleven. With your administrative sections. So he's told me that he'll be able to get that to us after Thanksgiving. Um, so my anticipation is that. Depending upon what progress we make tonight, we should be able to have a full document ready to go. By the December business meeting, I would think, if if all if all follows. Falls in place.
Great. Good.
Great. Great, thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to.
Well, if everybody, any, the rest of members of the board, the. Uh, farm in Agland Protection, we talked about.
Okay.
Um, three options for purchases, development rights and conservation easements. And just, you know, it didn't come to any conclusion, but just these are. Three options that are frequently used.
Hmm.
Um.
Did we get digital copies of those? Do they just come to the meeting?
I know what we have to meeting. I think it's just just we got what. What was distributed at the meeting, that's all I have, I think.
Yeah. At the meeting.
I think so. Um, option one is.
It'd be nice for all the workers. I'll I'll try to scan it.
Okay. But just just a, you know, for the sake of the meeting, it'd be in the minutes. Um, interested. You pay interested landowners to protect their land. Um, or there's the donation of conservation easements, or option three is partial tax exemption. For a certain. Term on conservation easements. So.
Great. And the Ed Committee is is planning to follow up on this, right?
Oh, yes.
So there's. Danby has some of these provisions, so they were gonna invite the planner from Danby to come join us at the next meeting, I think.
That's what, that's what I remember, December meeting and just.
Great, great.
Great.
Okay. Anything else?
Well.
If not. Let's move on to the business. Um, so we need to. Adopt the twenty twenty-four budget. Tonight. To comply with. New York State town law. And let's see, let's stop sharing this. And. Okay, there's my budget spreadsheet. Um. Not too interesting in itself. We've been through this all, right? I will just, a couple of notes. The Worker Center recently sent out a um. An update of the um living wage rate. Um, so it it doesn't really affect the budget, but it it I think, you know, so the. Um, so it, it doesn't really affect the budget, but it, it, I think, you know, so the, the living wage rate is eighteen forty-five. Um, so that'll affect. The hourly wage for some posi- positions, so. For the.
What, what is the hourly wage now? But we don't really have.
Um, so.
It, it was a big jump.
Yeah.
What's that count?
It was a big jump this year from the previous.
Yeah, I think it was seventeen sixty-six.
Okay.
So it was, so it was, it, it was, we've been a living wage employer. Since dawn started that, you know, so we've, we've. We've done that, so. Um. I, I don't think, um. What, what am I doing? How you been going in there, okay? Um, I guess what I would say is, um. Trying to get down to the bottom here. So as I described in my presentation, um. We are, um. Just below the tax cap.
Hmm.
Um, and I would, I guess, it's not a big deal, but, I mean, I might. Recommend that we. Go a little bit closer to the tax cap, just because. Um, we're, we're applying a very large amount of fund balance to offset this levy. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's, that's definitely on the high end. Um, but we don't have a lot of wiggle room, because if we don't wanna go over the tax cap, and so, um. But we do have seven thousand. Six hundred dollars, six, seventy-five hundred dollars. So I would propose to make, um. To reduce this number by. Seventy-five hundred, which would be what? If I did that right. Yeah.
So I'd just be kind of holding on to that for later.
Say that again?
I would just be holding on to it for later, for seventy-five hundred, basically.
Well, so, um.
It's gonna stay in that.
Not, not, so. These two orange cells are what we're. Feeding back to reduce the levy, right?
Right.
And so I'm just reducing that amount by seventy-five hundred.
I understand, yeah, so we're holding on to that.
Yes, we're holding, we're keeping it in reserve.
Yeah, I mean, it's in some.
That's what you said, that's what you meant, okay, okay, then you're correct, yeah. Um, so that, that would be my recommendation.
Good idea.
Okay.
We have a lot of. Significant projects and it works.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I think the more. And the flexibility we can provide for.
Right at the levy, do we have to be a dollar under it?
We're definitely a dollar under it, so we're a hundred and thirty-eight dollars under it.
Okay.
There it is, right there.
I wasn't sure.
I agree, that's, you know. I hope all the math is right, but. Um. Anyway, I, I feel okay about that, um. I can't think of, that's the only change I would recommend to what we were thinking of for the preliminary budget. So I will offer a resolution to amend the, um. The, um. A fund balance from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred.
Second.
So seconded by Tim, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, great, okay. Are there any other concerns or recommendations on the budget? And if there are, we're gonna have to, we'll, we'll be juggling them to keep under the, the tax stamp, but. Um, I think this. Yeah. Are we ready to adopt it? Well. Too easy. Um.
Don't say that until you get a vote.
Okay. So, um. Well, with that, I will. Offer a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four. Town budgets. Seconded by Michelle. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Another year, another dollar. And so now, um. Move on to discussion of the. Of the zoning law. And Tim had suggested that we look at the use table and.
So, Mark, did we finish everything in this list from the last time?
That's, that's my question, before we start on anything else. I think we did, but I just wanna make sure.
We did.
I think we did. I have a lot of check files. Did you go to the end?
I thought we.
I think we did, I just wanna make sure.
I knew it was late, but I.
Something. Yeah, I think you registered, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to verify.
That's, that was my Halloween, yeah.
Yeah, so I had, um, we'd been in communication with, with, um, our attorney, Guy Crowe. You've read the draft and so a lot of the stuffs that we did last week were simply. Relatively minor editorial changes that he recommended that we make for legal purposes. Um. Another recommendation that he had is that we think twice about. The category of special use permits in the use table. Um. And he provided, uh, he provided me and Mark a. A PowerPoint that he had prepared for the. Association of Towns, I guess.
Association, something.
And, um. That kind of. Rehearses what appears to be a tendency. Amongst a special, especially area towns. Us to, to reduce or back off of special use permits. Because of the perception of, of redundancy. Um, that if it's permitted, it's permitted.
Hmm.
So I looked at them and, and there were many times where I just got the sense that in some columns. The zoning commission put SUP all the way across. Maybe to save time and not go into the weeds about which use would be permitted in which district. So I think it's prudent for us to take another look at that.
Yeah.
Um. And.
Can I follow up on that comment, so. My understanding, what he was saying is that site plan review is stronger. And. That. You can. You know, you can, you can do things with site plan re- review to provide the protections that you might. Be interested in for certain things. Um. But he did say in that document, I mean, so special use permits have some application. Um. And what was the example he gave?
Something like. Communication towers.
He mentioned that, but in his PowerPoint, he mentioned like, would you want like, something next to a school or something? Something.
Like a gas station next to a school.
Yeah, or, you know, yeah, so. Um.
Campus.
At any rate, I mean, basically, he said the courts.
It would do well.
Have ruled. Well, that if, if a use is allowed in an area and it's, it's basically operating as it normally would. Then. Then it allows use and.
Who's zoning board, be picking winners or losers?
So, but that, so that is.
Within, as long as it's permitted, then.
But, but, yeah, and so, especially use permit. From what Nan has said repeatedly is it cannot be used for a denial, it is not used to stop, it, it's just. Any, Guy said this about site plan review too, is to mitigate impacts.
Right.
If it qualifies for site plan review, then it's allowed use and you go from there.
Yeah.
Um, but I heard the same thing about special use permits from Nan, I think this was in the zoning commission discussions, wasn't it, Michelle?
I don't recall Nan ever saying anything against special use permits.
Yeah, she, she was, she was saying that as supporting them.
Right, so. Remember that. Uh. Special use permit means that the use is allowed.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and what she was saying is that a lot of people say, oh, they're used to stop projects, and that's not what they're used for, that's not a proper use. So.
So my, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Should I say?
Yeah.
Okay, my memory of this, and I'm just re, starting to reread the special use permits thing, is it's kind of. Like you would want, maybe something's allowed, but maybe you want to have more say over the degree. To like, like, for example, gas station next to a school, or. I, I know one thing on your list was veterinary clinic, right?
I just, I just made a list of what has SUP, basically.
And it. I thought maybe, you know, a small veterinary clinic that just had, you know, one vet and one technician, is one thing. A large veterinary clinic that might afford horses or whatever is another thing, and especially use permit gave you a little more latitude to. Control like the degree of, in other words, not, you can have a use, even though. Like, within that use, not things are like, not all things are equal. And so I guess I don't understand the. Um, I don't mind going through this stuff again, because I'm only at the time, but, um. I guess I don't understand the discipline, why people are against special use permits. That still isn't clear to me.
So I, like, in. You know, my, uh, yeah, I feel, because I, I'm just absorbing what I've learned, so, you know, correct me. But my, like, I, I think what I would hear from Guy in response to, to what you said is if. You know, if, if a veterinary clinic. Was allowed, um, and it met the requirements for, you know, building size and employees. Then you, you would be able to, um. Site plan review would be a stronger tool, is what he would say.
Well, he did send, he sent a lot of. Case history and this PowerPoint, and interestingly, one of them was the number of employees. And apparently the courts have rejected. Special use limitations to limitations on the number of employees. That was one of the examples that he had, which was interesting, so, a lot of that got my attention. You know, Guy's role in all of this has always been, his, his position is, my job. Is to make sure, one, you don't sue, and two, if you do, we win the suit. I mean, he's quite clear about that.
Yeah.
And so his, his tendency does tend to be. Legally conservative, there's no question about it, um, but in this case, it's something that I learned that I thought was interesting.
But he was also saying, as I think Tim alluded to, that, um, I haven't talked to anyone about it, other planners, but. The planners in this area have sort of drifted away from special use permit and towards more emphasis on. Site plan review, and in, in our zoning law, anything that requires special use permit also requires site plan review.
Right, right.
So if, to me. The. If we can handle it with your site plan review, I, I find the simplicity of that attractive, um, like, the streamlining of that. Compelling.
So just in the Reader's Aid. Um. I can't remember. Um. The special use process allows the review board to allow for these uses with conditions. Places to take care of issues that may be associated with that use, so that's the thing I refer to, that, you know, there are some uses that. There can be a big variation, and then maybe you don't want. For all the uses. You know, in all the places. So.
And that, and that makes sense.
Yeah. But, you know, we should just go through your list.
I do, I do remember that there were a couple of times when the zoning commission. Instead of struggling over which district, just said SUP across the board. And it's a kind of punting.
Yeah.
Mechanism. And maybe we could just quickly look at those and see what we think. So if we went to the table of uses. Which is. Table one.
What section is that?
It's article four.
Alright. So I don't know what, uh. Version we've got, maybe.
Well, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, it's a pretty good version anyway, that's, that's a good, just. I can't see it.
I don't know.
No, I have no idea, I can barely see this one, okay. I have the latest version, but I can't see all of it here, so. Okay, alright, so. Alright, I don't see any on the first page.
So the first, first one that I see is multifamily dwelling with five or more units.
Okay.
Depending upon which page that is for everybody.
I have pitch, that's on page forty-two for me, but.
And for me, it's forty-one. And that's SUP all the way across.
Yep. Yeah, Guy, Guy really made the same comments, these comments to us.
Was that one in particular that he?
I don't think he's owned it on that many in particular, he just.
Yeah.
Just stay away from SUP.
He just doesn't like them.
Yeah, yeah, he does like them.
And from what I heard, you mentioned the fact that it goes through. Site plan review anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, that was just kind of there.
Well, it doesn't necessarily go through site plan review, it's approved by the review board.
Okay.
So, SUP is a special use permit review and approved by the review board.
Okay.
That's not necessarily a site plan review.
Yeah.
My understanding. Yeah, I thought it was mandatory.
But it just doesn't say that.
Maybe it doesn't say it there, but.
We're, we're, are you looking at that thing up there?
It's a key, yeah.
Oh, it's a key, um, yeah, I think.
You just wanna make sure that it's clear.
I'd have to go back to the, uh, you know, there's a little section on such special use permits, um, I need to go back to that section. Like, we were talking about it. Yes. I thought it was that too.
Article, article eight.
Yeah.
Here we go. So eight point three, did, did you guys already say this, procedures, a coordination with site plan, for any application that requires special use of. Approval, site plan review and approval by the review board shall also be required.
Okay, that's clear, good, that's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you can't put all that stuff in the key.
Right, 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 no, the song is that's clear.
Yeah. Okay, so. Um.
What is it that's, that's happening, that other municipalities backed away from site or special use permits? Is it that a developer feels he's not getting? Permission or whatever that he wants, and so then he's suing the.
I didn't get that sense, I just got the sense that they. Prefer the other, I mean.
I, I got the sense that they felt like site plan review could handle it.
Yeah.
It's a stronger tool.
And it was less nebulous.
It was less nebulous.
And the and he, the cases he cited were all about. Basically. You know, if if it's an allowed use, you know, say it makes a certain level of noise. If that use. Normally makes that loud level, that bit level of noise, then you can't pick on them.
Right.
You can't, you can't target. Yeah, yeah.
But, okay, so in this case, the S U P goes for multi. Dwelling with five or more units.
Right.
Right, so there could be a big difference between one with six units and one with twenty units.
Yep.
Right.
And so I could see. Where then maybe you want to look at this to make sure we're not dealing with like the twenty unit.
Mm hmm.
Well.
So that brings to my mind a question lingering like. Like if you have site plan review, could you design site by review so that it treats the different sizes? I guess you'd have to specify that news table or something. I don't know, but. You see what I'm saying, like for a really big thing, you say, well, the setback should be this or whatever, so.
Yeah. Kind of complicated.
Yeah, and so so here the distinction that Michelle's pointing to is that we do have multifamily dwelling units or less. They're permitted everywhere.
Right.
Then five or more are not, so once, one thing we could do is to decide where they would be permitted. For example. Or stick with S U P, which permits them everywhere. I mean, that's a distinction. So S U P does not. Exclude them.
It doesn't exclude them, but it just puts, to my mind, it puts it under more review. Right, puts it under review in addition to the S B R.
It it would be more review.
Right.
I'm just wondering. What that review would look like. You know, because.
I have to go back to that. S U P section again. Well, we have an environmental assessment form. I don't know if it's required in S P Rs.
What about a special use permit for where something's illegal is called a variance? How are those handed? Are we handling variances?
Special use permit for what?
If you will, a special use permit for something is illegal, I think we call them variances.
Yeah.
And or.
That's a separate.
Yeah.
I mean, basically you apply for a variance and then if if the if the Z B A said, okay, that's okay. And then if that use required S U P, they would be subject to the.
Under, under section eight point three. For S U P. It includes area variance, variances where proposed S U P permit contains one or more features that don't comply with dimensional requirements. Application may be made directly to the Z B A to seek an area of that variance. Uh, well, I'm on page one sixteen, but I'm not sure.
I'm on page.
Section eight point three. So even within the S U P. For variances. It's. As I read it, it still needs to go to the Z B A. Approve a variance.
Hmm.
As would anything.
So I mean, in the in the Reader's Guide, um, the special use process allows them. Or. Will allow for these uses with conditions placed to take care of issues that may be associated. So I like, for example, if it's a very large apartment building. You know, maybe they would have more requirements for water and.
You're looking at this Reader's Aid at the beginning, right?
Yeah.
Second paragraph.
I'm. That's the first paragraph.
So. Oh, I see it.
Anyway, so I, to my mind, I look at it as. It's just another, um. You know, for certain cases, just an extra review.
Good night.
Right.
Say it again, Michelle, I was distracted.
Um, to my mind, like an S U P is just an extra review for some projects. That might be problematic.
Problematic or?
Problematic.
Not beneficial.
Maybe they are beneficial, but you want to make sure that they're not problematic.
Yeah.
I mean, you could argue that, uh, you know, with the housing shortage and everything that, uh, like a building with. Twenty units is beneficial, but maybe it's problematic.
Yeah, okay. But if, so. So, yeah. Uh, this is just my. Unfamiliarity with this because if it's allowed.
Right.
If, you know, so. Okay, so if it was twenty or more units, then you would want to have, there are other conditions you would want to look at. Is that right?
No, but you want to make sure they have enough water, so you'd have to know that they have to.
But environmental health is going to make sure of that, aren't they?
Are they? I don't know. I mean, from what I understand, if they're having problems, say, for example, at Boise, well, they're having problems with water. So apparently somehow it wasn't looked at.
I think that may have been with the. Uh, earlier units. I I know some of them had problems, so.
So. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so it's just my own philosophy. I don't have any problems with that more more layers. Uh, because I think then you catch more, uh. You might catch more problems.
Sometimes too much bureaucracy makes confusion too. Well, I don't know if it's bureaucracy. It's just, my concern is just what's going to have more teeth. Legally, that's all.
Yeah.
Well.
I'm I'm concerned about that, not about. Bureaucracy, because it's not really any more bureaucracy. It's simply. A careful look.
Yeah.
Right.
Let's be proposed. Because, I mean, I guess my. You come at this with the attitude of whoever's doing these projects isn't necessarily doing it for the good of the community. They're doing it so they can make a bunch of money. And so, you know, I think it's up to us to make sure that. Checks and balances are inflated, make sure that they're. You know. Not sacrificing the good of the community for the effect of making more money. But that's. My own.
I mean, I I think that's what this is all about. It is the best way to do it.
Yeah, so so I don't have any problems with, I mean, I don't have any problems with discussing it, or I don't have any problems with relooking. At at some of these things. I I think you're right. I think some of us just said, some of us didn't have the stomach to allow. Some of these uses and so then we, as a compromise, said, okay, well, it just. Got a special use permit and it's going to get looked at more stringently. Okay, we'll go.
Okay, so that, I guess that's, I mean, it's problematic for our discussions. Like, that's where I I kind of feel like I need more information. Like, what would that mean? Looking at it more stringently? Could you look at it more stringently? I don't know. Based on what I'm. Uh, absorbing from Guy, um.
So is he saying that the special use permit doesn't work?
He's saying the special use permit doesn't hold up in court.
Oh, and it's also, he's saying it's redundant.
To the S P R.
To S P R.
Yes.
His concern, his main concern, as I understand it, is that it hasn't held up in court. In numerous cases.
But I think he's also.
And he also does believe that S P R does the job.
But he's also talking about functionally.
Yeah.
I think he thinks that site plan review functions. Better and can accomplish most of what you would acco- want to accomplish. Um, so, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I have a lot of confidence in the revised site and review that the zoning commission presented.
Yeah.
I mean, it has. It's very careful. So. I personally would be fine with that.
Yeah, with like changing all the S U Ps with P R.
Well, I wouldn't want to change all of them to S P R. I'd want to look at them again.
Yeah, because maybe we want to put Xs.
Yeah, because some we might.
Right. Yeah, right, exactly. Because that's. So, yeah, so I do, all right, so I see the multifamily. Um, I mean, I guess you can, I hear somewhere here, C P's, they're either. Oh, the cannabis. Now, the problem with the cannabis dispensary in lounge, it had to be what was going to be allowed by the town. I think at the time.
Cannabis has got a whole raft of.
But it, but as far as these things, if it's not even a, the dispensary is in lounge, isn't even allowed by the.
So so that's the the, it it is, so. It's going to be allowed by the town.
Okay.
The dispensaries are going to be allowed. We adopted that. Because the state hadn't formed the cannabis review board. We were waiting for final regulations. It was our last chance to do it. We had to do it or not, so we did it. And frankly, we could do it at the next meeting, as far as I'm concerned, to just repeal that local law. Because we, you know, that's, that wasn't our intent to to ban dispensaries and stuff like.
Okay.
So, um.
We got put in a corner and we didn't have enough information, so we banned them.
Okay.
I mean, before, right before that, we were like, yeah, it's fine, you know, we totally were supportive of it, so.
Well, I guess what I would say is then. You know, if you if you're worried about the S U Ps, and the first one I see is the multifamily, then I can see, all right, let's change it to S P R. And, you know, if something comes down the line. You know, if when you're revising this law, then you say, well, maybe the S P R wasn't enough in this case, and next, so we don't want.
So modify it the other way in the future?
Yeah.
I mean, what I'm finding when I'm looking through these different uses. My head scratches the same way each time.
Yeah.
It's like, okay, this will seem just like the last one. I'm not sure which way I would go. I mean, like.
Well, and I was tempted, I mean, we discussed these so many times, honestly. It's not like it was one meeting.
I think I think we discuss it in a lot more meetings that we'll finally get there, Michelle.
I don't like that.
And that is not a lot of play. I brought this up.
I like it, so I would like to, you know, add to this process to remember that something law can be changed, you know, that was one thing I.
Reviewed and remembered.
Yes, well, the part of the, that workshop I went to, um. Couple of weeks ago with about. How you know when you need to change your zoning law?
Yeah.
And so this is an ongoing process. This is forever carved into stone here, so.
And they made it clear you should be doing it like every two years.
Well, it probably was not going to happen, both you. We're we're volunteer.
Now, you could easily review the use table every two years.
But if if something came up, well. What they were saying, I wish I had my notes here, but, um. They're saying if if the zoning board is regularly coming up and going, you know, this isn't making sense, and they, you know. On a regular basis, then they give the feedback about how it should be changed. You know, so that's. And and how how it should evolve, I should say, it with the needs of the town. Yeah, so that's.
It's, and and also I I will confess to you that my kind of philosophy of how I do things is like, well, let's try it out.
I guess we're all there, but.
And that's, uh, that's not working, and like, nobody's going to die, probably, uh, so.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, or, you know, people might be disappointed. They don't have enough, uh, you know, water to do their laundry, but, you know. But. So I would say, uh, for the, in that particular case, I guess I would be okay with switching those to S P Rs.
For multifamily dwelling.
Yeah.
You're you're, so you're proposing for that particular point?
Particularly when I mean, I think.
Not a global.
No, I think we should go through everyone that there's a question about, and I think we should.
Okay.
Because I think some of them we might just want to put Xs.
Yeah, I. I'm happy to do that. I.
So I could, anyway, I don't, we, I don't know, you want to make a resolution or motion or whatever, or.
Um, so so we just go through them one at a time?
Yeah, let's go through them one at a time. We don't need a resolution for each one. Let's let's line them. I'll make a list.
Okay.
We're starting with multifamily dwelling.
Yeah.
With units, with five or more units. So you're, they would all be S P R.
Right.
Number here, the next one I see is function.
Say it again, Carol. Sorry, I can't hear you.
The next one I see is farm auction house.
Farm brewery, actually.
Well, the one. Right.
Are we looking for any of them?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So auction houses, S U P in a. Ag rural. And then S P R in focused commercial.
We're on an auction house now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember the discussion of that in particular, that it was thought that. Auction houses could be something appropriate in an agricultural area, but that you would want some contingencies.
Yeah, like if you. Example, I mean, maybe this, I'm pretty sure it's an auction house, you know, because we wanted to do it in valley.
Yeah.
That place.
But wouldn't the contingencies, so with those, so the contingencies, you're saying that S U P could establish contingencies, but S P R.
I'm saying that that was, that was the logic of the zoning commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So. Uh, you wouldn't want the thing in Newark Valley. May, maybe you would want to focus, I don't know, I mean, it's only an S P R focused commercial, so.
I I would, I would propose S P R for that.
Okay, so we could do that.
Does that make sense?
No, but S P R is stronger than S U P.
No, S U P is extra. Strong, the strongest is S U P, it's my understanding. S P R is just site plan review.
So I should have, I should, I'll. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, because back there in Guy's comments at the beginning, he felt that S P R was.
More robust.
More robust.
In court. In court, maybe, but I don't know why. I'm a little still confused about that. If the S U P. It leads to an S P R, then why?
No, it don't. It doesn't do that.
It don't do that.
Well, you have to have an.
All S U Ps require S P R. Yeah, S P R doesn't lead to an S.
Well, technically, in a way it does, but. I don't see.
Well, I mean, we're making a decision about. What would require S U P, and I'm trying to figure out. If it's worth it.
Yeah, right.
No, and I'm not sure it is, so.
Case, I can see S P R is, you know.
Is.
Robust.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially since it's, um, an S P R in the focused commercial.
So before we did did, I might have missed it because I, uh, the farm, I have.
We skipped that.
S U Ps on.
Did we skip it? I thought.
The previous page, farm brewery, farm winery, farm cider, or farm facility.
Oh, what pages?
It's on four forty-three on my page that.
Oh, oh, right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so that one.
Oh, we, okay, so we're going through every S U P on here, yeah, just looking at the one that I crossed.
Right, no, every everyone within it's okay.
Okay. Yeah. So. So I guess.
Funny, at first it looks like these were all permitted everywhere.
Yeah, we changed it. We changed those.
Okay.
Yeah, because mine's already.
We we made those changes.
Wait, who, you guys or me?
The board. We did, maybe before you were on the board.
Yeah, I look careful on this.
That was in June.
Okay.
We did that, right?
We did that, yeah.
I, well, I disagree with that. I think some of these should be S P Rs. I don't think you necessarily want to have a. Distillery in. A residential Hamlet.
I would not disagree with you.
So. Like, I think, uh. West Sladeville and Beesimer.
We we disallowed them there, so those are Xs now.
Oh.
So the way that we have it, we have it P in Ag.
Yeah.
X in Essener.
Okay.
S U P in Sladeville. X in West Sladeville, S U P in Caroline Center. S U P in Hamlet, Brookton Dale, X in Central Brookton Dale, and P in Commercial.
So again, I guess I could see changing those to S P Rs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So change that to S P R.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
Just the S U P ones.
Yeah, just the S. Now.
Cannabis, I would leave them S U P.
Yeah.
As a placeholder. As a placeholder, the cannabis.
Yeah.
Cannabis dispensaries in lounge, leave it at SUP.
Before that, though, she's right, there's the campground.
Oh, campground.
So, can I ask a question about the campground camping units definition?
Mm-hmm.
Because there really, there are a lot of different campgrounds. Say, somebody's got. A budget property, and he wants to open it up to Boy Scouts for a weekend, for ten troops to come. Would he have to get a permit for that?
I'd have to look at the definition again.
That's always, well, what, what does the judge keep called?
I believe a campground was more than.
Five, more than five, but with, unlike.
And I think it has to, it depends on what kind of camping.
And I believe it might have been.
Alright, campground, parcel of land upon which five or more campsites, including camping units and recreational vehicles are located, established, or maintained. For seasonal up to one hundred days, eighty days occupancy, by camping units as temporary living quarters or recreation, education, or vacation purposes. It shall not be, shall not include uses limited solely to the personal use of the owner.
So the answer would be yes.
Yes.
It would, what, what about the Finger Lakes Trail, if, like, four or five groups are up in Shadig and Hollow, does that become a campsite?
What?
Or, or on to these private property, cause they've got trails going through. I think it's, the person is maintaining it and renting them out.
Well, they don't get rented.
Well, then you get into the thing.
Well, though, there's, I, no, I'm, I'm, but I'm, I, I camp a lot, right, so I'm thinking, sometimes we'll come onto Finger Lakes Trail, and there are already three or four groups there.
Well, it depends on where you are, maybe it's on state land.
Yeah.
Maybe it's on private, that's my question.
And if it's on private land, it is.
I'm not trying to really.
No, but if it's, or if it's on private.
But that wouldn't be a campground.
That wouldn't be a campground.
Right, if you, you just, you can go camp all you want.
So you set up a tent and just, right, okay.
But you're not gonna necessarily, but if you're gonna have, like, somebody's gonna set up showers and.
A campground would be like a getaway, right.
That's what I, okay, that's, that's, it's not like, it's not like a, it's not like a through backpacking.
Within ten beds.
Okay. What about, you know, if you have outhouses, and then we have, you know.
Right.
Yeah. Things set up, right? I mean, if, if it's set up for more than five people like that permanently, then it would be.
Five, five camps.
Right.
Okay, because the, the Finger Lakes Trail is set up without houses and.
But the Finger Lakes Trails is, they're not a private, in other words.
They, they are on private property, that's what I'm saying. They go across private property pretty regularly.
Well, I guess I would say, if you as a landowner are letting these people do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you need a permit, because what, where are those people taking the food?
To dig a hole.
Well.
Well, all I have to do is be permitted.
Getting permitted.
For it.
Would be. Five or more units, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it would have ramifications for your neighbors. You've got five or more, five or more groups, and they have a bonfire, and they have, you know, whatever, so, yeah, I think it should be permitted. Yeah. Well, somebody should contact Finger Lakes Trails people, let them know that they should contact all these property owners, like, you know this. I'm just saying, it's like. I'm not, you know, I don't think it's gonna cause a problem. I mean, if there's no problem being caused.
Yeah.
You don't have to pre.
I really don't think this is what is meant by campground.
Yeah.
Okay.
I really don't.
I like to hear that, okay.
I mean, you know, if, if I had a neighbor that regularly had ten people camping on their.
Renting glamour tents.
Yeah, on their land.
Yeah.
Under the guys being on the Finger Lakes Trail.
Huh.
I might complain to somebody.
Right.
And say, and then they might say, you need to get a permit for this.
Okay. Yeah, no, I can see, I can see the complications.
Yeah, but if it's not causing any kind of disturbance, I don't even know that it's happening.
Right.
Why would I contact anybody?
Okay. Well, some people, yeah, wanna make sure they're doing everything right.
So should we leave SUP then for the campgrounds?
Really? Leave SUP?
No, I'm asking a question.
Oh, okay. And did we, did we, uh, did we cite auction house about that?
Yeah, we did, yes, and we're gonna change.
SPR?
SPR.
Yeah, SPR, okay, I gotta work it down.
Yes.
Three.
Um, then I could see even here in this case, SPR for the camp, ground camping minutes.
Okay. I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Does everybody agree? Carol?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then what about, and then also canas- cannabis dispensary, SPR?
I mean, if the town's allowing it, then.
Yeah, I guess so.
I would.
Probably gonna eliminate all the SUPs.
This is gonna be a, a royal flush.
Oh, we talked about. We talked about car wash.
Okay, both, I'll put both of those together.
Car wash is the only place where it's SUP or. In Caroline Center and Focus Commercial, they're disallowed everywhere else.
Oh, really?
Oh, I might, I might.
Well, outdated.
Well, that, that's changed, that was changed, and.
Okay.
Uh.
Car wash.
Car wash, and what, what is your comment about car wash?
They're disallowed everywhere, except for SUP in Sladeville and Caroline Center, and Focus Commercial.
Okay, I just, I have the final.
Is that right?
I, I have the draft, I mean, from ten twenty-four, and so is supplemental. So, so, it's not supplemental, so.
SUP, right?
SUP, yeah.
A special use permit.
Yeah, just, yeah, that's what I.
Yeah.
That may have been changed.
That's what I had.
A couple more coming in, car wash, but not clothes wash. We'll get to that.
Oh.
We're at the L's, we'll come to that.
At the what?
The L's.
Yeah, laundry.
Oh, laundry.
Okay.
What's your obsession with a laundromat?
It's been brought up by a couple people, why doesn't somebody build a laundromat in Carolina?
Oh, like out in the district, or in the.
My understanding is that for car wash. We disallowed it in Bessemer, West Sladeville, Brooktondale, and Brooktondale Center.
We disallowed it?
That's what I have.
Oh, wow.
That we did that in June.
This isn't up to date, okay, that, it might be in my other one, but, um, and that makes sense, I don't really.
And it was SUP in Sladeville, Caroline Center, you know, Speedsville. And commercial. And obviously, the reason that it was SUP in the first place is the concern about water.
Yeah. And I, I remember we talked about this so often, and Ernie said that there was no way there'd be enough water anywhere to, to run one of those things, a car wash.
Right, so I think the discussion must have evolved to like, well, if there is, okay, is that right?
Right.
I mean, you know, there's, there's lighting issues, like they're lit up, uh, probably mostly, right?
Right.
So maybe you don't want to have them in, uh, residential hamlets.
Mm-hmm, so you put them in an ag rural, but it's prohibited.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
At least in my copy.
Yeah, my copy's, I have it. Well, it is, it is kind of a, you know, uh, intensive, like light intensive and. Noisy and the whole thing, so it's like a, slightly, to me, to my mind, it's like light industrial.
I'd be happy to keep that at SUP.
Yeah, I think, cause I think the whole water issue is really, I think we need an extra layer on that one.
Okay.
So SUP Sladeville, SUP Speedsville, and SUP Focus Commercial. It's disallowed everywhere else.
And disallowed.
Unless somebody comes and asks for a variance.
It can prove, it can prove that they've got the water for it, well, just because they asked for variance, doesn't mean they're gonna get it.
Yeah. But some of the carton new car washes now, they have a closed loop system, they don't draw the water out of the ground, they've just got water, and they just cycle it and filter it and cycle.
Yeah.
Well, according to.
And it's just brown.
Yeah.
And the water's really brown.
I mean, Ernie talked to a bunch of car washes, and he said that there's no way we would have enough water for it.
Okay.
So the next one that has SUP is brewery, winery, cidery, and interestingly enough, these SUPs were added by us.
We had a conversation about.
It's a learning process.
Yeah. Well, and I may say, may I just say, that's exactly what we did for months, okay, go over this use table and change it. And so you're like basically starting over from what we were doing.
Yeah.
So I would make a proposal that in this case, we, we revert, revert back to SPR from SUP.
Okay.
And just to review, we had agreed, Mark, if you can look at your list, we'd agreed that they're permitted in ag rural.
SPR, yeah.
They're not permitted, they're X in, in Bessemer.
Hmm.
So then they'd be SPR in Sladeville. X in West Sladeville, SPR in Speedsville.
Have a, I have a W in West Slade.
SPR, SPR in Brooktondale. X in Central Brooktondale. And P in Focus Commercial.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, okay.
Which one is, are you doing?
Brewery, winery, cidery.
Oh.
Or distillery. Or distillery.
Not part of a farm operation. Yeah.
Do you see that, Mark?
So, P in ag rural.
P, X.
Yeah.
S, SPR. X. SPR. SPR, XP.
Yeah.
Okay. So we get rid of the W, that's next. Next would be commercial recreation facility, outdoor.
Okay, that, I mind the rules.
Right across the way, oh, all right, they're all SUPs.
CP.
And indoors, all SPR.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that they're SUPs because of concern about noise and light and.
Right, cause of, you know, the whole pickleball thing.
Yeah, so I, I just, yeah. This goes back to the question of like, yeah, this. What does SUP really do?
Right.
Can you just, you know, it's like, okay, you guys are gonna be quiet, you know, um, if it's an allowed use. I, I, I think SPR could, would, yeah.
I just.
Yeah, I can see where, so it's like commercial kennel, okay, so it must have been the.
Same thing.
The noise.
Noise.
Same thing.
So let's make a decision about commercial recreation facility outdoor. There, SUP all across the board.
Uh, originally, it looks like it was not allowed in Brooktondale.
Correct. I have SUP across the board, no.
I have an, I have.
Initially, it was not.
I have an X in him, Brooktondale.
Yeah.
But I have an X, and then I have an SUP.
Right.
The X is Xed off.
That's because we changed it.
Somebody changed it.
She was saying initially, right, it was X.
Cause that's it, yeah, that looks like we changed it.
We changed it because there was an argument that instead of just prohibiting it, make it SUP.
You, that, that's what you remember?
Yeah.
See, I think that's, I think that's exactly.
Cause I, I recommended X's in both Hamlet, West Sladeville, and Brooktondale, and got overruled. I remember that very well.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think that's exactly the point Guy is trying to make, is that, um, you know.
Well, why would it be?
Can't just decide.
Why would it be allowed in Brooktondale? I mean, why would it be prohibited in Brooktondale, and yet allowed?
I agree with that.
And Hamlet, yeah, and West Sladeville and Beesimer.
I agree with you, that's why I proposed, or that we X them, X those.
I think we should X them, I think we should X them and put SPR every place else.
I agree with you.
Okay.
X. Say that again, Michelle, X, X.
I think they should be.
Change those all to SPR?
Except for where we X them out.
I, I only have one X out.
I know, I think we should X them out in, uh, Beesimer.
In, in, in.
Hamlet, Beesimer, I think it should be an X, and West Sladeville should be an X. Uh. Brooktondale.
Center Brooktondale.
Yeah.
Center Brooktondale.
So, yeah.
Center Brooktondale.
Oh, right, well.
For some reason.
For some reason, the X is in Brooklyn.
I know, I didn't understand that at the time, but.
Rather than center, well, Center Brooktondale is more commercial than Brooktondale. Center Brooktondale is like where Brooklyn's market is and stuff, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
There's Brooklyn Market, but they're all full of residences right in there.
So the Brooktondale, Hamlet, I think is the surrounding area that's more residential. I'd have to look at the map, but.
The, the Brooktondale, so you've got the Center Brooktondale, and then the, the Hamlet goes up Brooktondale Road, where there's a lot more land per house.
Yeah.
And there's just, there's just more space.
Yeah.
There to be development, um, versus right in the center where people have like, less than a quarter acre. You know.
So, I mean, unlikely that they would have a outdoor recreational facility.
They would, yes, you know, I suppose, I mean.
Commercial, commercial.
Yeah, commercial, right, 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 I mean, I can't imagine any, any space for one, right?
But, anyway, uh. Excuse me. So I would go back to the X at Hamlet, Brooktondale. So Center Brooktondale, are you saying they should not be in Center Brooktondale either? Or would you do SPR there?
Um, so, I'm sorry, where are we, Michelle, in center or over?
Um, uh, Center Brooktondale.
I would just say they're not allowed, I mean, there's just, no room for one, I mean, if somebody tried to pack one in, I, I.
All right, so then, so then I would change all the other SUPs to SPR, so that would mean SPR in ag rural. X in Hamlet, Beesimer. SPR in Sladeville Springs. X in West Sladeville. SPR in Caroline Center, Carolina, Speedsville. X in Brook, uh, Hamlet, Brooktondale, X in Central Brooktondale, and then SPR in Focus Commercial.
Okay.
That would be my proposal.
I'm fine with that.
That's funny.
It's number six. Cal?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, that's, you know.
SPR.
So then, commercial kennel has SUPs where it's permitted.
Yeah. But again, they're permitted in ag rural. Sladeville Springs, so say, um. I don't, I had, I have a map, but like, say, Lowchuck, would that be in?
West Sladeville.
That's in West Sladeville?
Well, that's still permitted, this is just new ones.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Well, anyway, I guess I'm fine with changing, all right, the SUPs to SPR on the commercial kennel, but. I mean.
Change, change those to SPRs?
Yeah, if we had this meeting tomorrow, who knows?
I definitely did with that, I.
We hope not to have this meeting tomorrow.
Hmm.
I'm gonna go beer.
Okay. All right, so the next SUPs are the event facilities, right?
Composting facility. Not part of a farm operation.
Uh. Oh, yeah, those are SUPs, yeah.
Well, I guess with the same logic, we can change the.
Farm, farm operation.
So I think we should change the SUPs to SPR, isn't it?
Are they composting, right? What's your, so there you wanna go with S U P, is that right, Tim? Composting facility?
I guess for composting facility, we would like to have another con- an additional layer of conversation. Whatever that would mean.
Okay, that's what we gotta figure out.
Yeah, whatever that would mean. But we have a whole section on S U Ps. There's a whole section. S U P is section eight.
So we have to read that and.
That's true.
I mean, it was, it was given due diligence by the zoning commission. So then we go to convenience store. Nope, we changed that.
Event facility.
Fuel gasoline station.
Event facility.
Oh, event facilities, really, oh, no. Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, the thing is. Event facilities, you know, that could be very loud. Be very noisy and have a lot of bright lights.
Right, so that, I think, means we wanna think about where they're permitted. Cuz I, I don't know, I mean, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, somebody, somebody up the road on on Valley Road wanted to have like a rock concert and invite hundreds of people there. I know. Like a, you know, mini Woodstock. I don't know if that makes it a facility.
Well, no, it depends on how many people, so if it's over a hundred, there's a. It requires a permit. It's my reflection.
Yeah, I mean, so the thing, all right, I, going back to my own personal, my own person. Situation, right, so I have three acres and then I have a five acre field. And so I theoretically, I could sell that five acre field to somebody. And they could turn that into an event facility. Which would probably make my life hell, basically, for living next to it. So, cuz they're not in the Agarol. So. I think, you know, things with. Extra lighting and sound, maybe you do want that extra layer of. You put limits on how many people are allowed or how how long they can have lights on or, you know.
They forgot to include mud races.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be the. No, they're not commercial.
I had a permanent mud racing track right by my house. Until only about six years ago when the guy died. Charlie White. Yeah, no, it just reminded me when you mentioned.
And it's a pain when they, when they used to have the love speaker.
Yeah.
There's only one weekend a year for his birthday. My fight with them was when they were done, they would roll the excess tires onto my land. And then every. June, I'd go back and roll them back over.
Anyway. Yeah, so I think, I think you have to go back to that, the S U P does give you another layer. Right?
No argument there.
And so. I think maybe an event thing needs an extra layer.
I'm fine with that.
It's interesting, I'm looking at the procedures and all. A seeker, other agency review.
And again, these are commercial, right?
Yes.
Commercial event facilities, not like a church or community center or the fire hall or, they're already ramped up, aren't they?
It's commercial.
Okay, just.
What, what are you saying?
I'm sorry, I was just making sure that this was commercial event facilities, not like. The community center and the church and everything, you know, that fire hall and.
Okay, so is the next one food and beverage?
Fuel.
Food and beverage.
Yeah.
There's only.
Beverage, so that's just a.
S U P for Hamlet, Beesimer and West Sliderville.
That's weird. I think.
Oh, well, I guess.
Because probably instead of excluding them, they made them S U P.
Yeah, to make, because those are more residential areas.
Right. I think it should be either excluded or S P R, that would be my. I, yeah, I think this really is interesting, so.
All right, I could see S P R.
That's my opinion.
S P R.
Number eight.
Okay.
And of course, let's not forget that the. The volume of these kinds of activities are delimited by square footage as well.
Which is in the. Dimensions statement.
Okay, so then I see, uh, next, here's S U Ps, the fuel gasoline station. Sliderville Springs. I can see changing those to S P Rs.
I definitely could, also for the electric vehicle one too.
Yeah.
I would change both of them.
S P Rs.
To be just straight across the board, all of them.
Wherever it's S U P, I mean, they're not allowed in some places.
Should you say the same thing for electric vehicle stations, Mark?
Yeah, I, that's my.
So, yeah, we're just changing S U Ps.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
I think funeral home should be S P R.
Well, I can, I don't have a strong feeling on that.
So, um, just so you're. So, Michelle, we change funeral home to. X Agarol, X Vessimer. S U P Sliderville, X West Sliderville. S U P Hamlet, S U P. Hamlet, Brooktondale, X Central Brooktondale, and S U P Commercial.
Right.
So you're saying change the S U Ps.
That's what I'm saying.
We did this, I can't remember when you joined us, Michelle.
I think you had already gone through this.
It's not just like a little charger, like the new charging stations are like these huge gas stations with their, they're lit up, they're neon lights. You know, um. You can see them for miles on.
Yeah. I'm probably, I think we were talking, I thought we were talking about funeral home, huh?
Yeah, we were.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Those are the same. They're, they're pretty much the same, of, you know, and so some X's.
Um, okay, so S S U P is going to S P Rs on that, right?
So funeral home are agreed, S P R.
Okay, then, then, then. All right, then we have the industrial use.
Oh, I've got the hunting preserve is a sub.
Oh, right, right, there's one in Agarol.
So that can just be S P R.
S P R for that. Hunting preserve? Yeah.
I've heard that there's a hunting club, right? Land just got sold.
Me across, across Bay Area there. Yeah. It's sold.
Yeah. And I think it was target shooting.
There's a target shooting right next to my house, and it's not hunting club. It's called getting the gun, getting the guns ready.
We are just over two hours.
Can we just finish this? I don't think we have that much more to do.
I thought you were gonna bring that over here, Michelle.
We haven't done industrial use, like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Industrial, it's like, there's an obvious reason why the zoning commission, S U Ps, we understand that.
Yeah, I can see keeping.
This, this would be one that I would keep. Then we have junk scrapyard and it's just S U P and focus commercial. Well, that was out of concern about the size and the nature of the junk here.
Right.
Leave it.
So you wanna change it to S P R or?
Okay.
Uh, mine large, S U P in Agarol. I think that can be S U P, S P R, cuz any large mine is gonna be regulated.
Right.
Heavily outside the town anyway. So I just say S P R.
Mixed use buildings. So that would be like one of like an apartment building, a store in it?
Probably, yes. Again, that's all delimited by, also by. Size. S P R across. If we ch- change all of these, I, I want. Charges for the advice. If we change so many of these, guy, guy won't charge us for the advice. He'll feel so good. Nursing home. That's S U P.
Retreat center.
Right, so it's kind of only S U Ps for the nursing home?
For nursing home?
Yeah.
I thought you were changing them all to S P R. Was that not right?
We hadn't discussed it.
So next to this building, we went to S P R, right? I propose nursing home to S P R across the board. Wildly popular.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, especially since offices are S P Rs, right, wherever they're allowed, so. I mean, some of those nursing homes can be like a big.
Right. A big office building.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
No, my, my in-laws were in one of these, like, I don't know. Any, that story is all. It's just like a big factory. It's not like a nice, it's not even like mountain manor.
I tried to get them to pre- prohibit it outside the residential districts. Earlier in June, but I did not prevail.
But nursing home?
Yeah.
That's to be a long-term careful license by New York State.
So now we're on retreat center, is that correct?
Retreat center, yeah. Retreat center, I would think, would have the same status as a.
Nursing home.
Is a wedding.
I think it's more like. Retreat center.
Yeah.
They probably have classes and.
Yeah, weekend thing.
Would the Nazarene camp, church camp be a retreat center?
It's kind of a campground. All right.
So.
There's a church there.
They rented out to people sometimes. L A C S goes there.
So, um.
What's the thought on retreat center? Anything?
I think it's more like an event facility, I could see keeping it as S U P.
Okay.
All right.
And move on. Not gonna argue with that.
Self-storage, self-storage.
Facility.
Am I wrong?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
S P R.
Self-storage.
I don't know what that.
And then there's sawmill commercial.
Ooh, I didn't see that.
Oh, I think we talked about stuff like that a lot.
I think that was a noise consideration.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what's the proposal?
Well, the zoning commission was worried about noise.
Yeah.
On sawmill commercial. Yeah. So. Every day. Noise.
I think you'd be worried about noise in a retreat center too.
So maybe you keep that as S U P? Have that other layer of, have an extra layer.
Yeah, why not?
I could keep it.
Sure.
Okay.
But we did change self-storage for facility, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Solar energy.
No, of a pool.
I find with S P R and then.
Okay.
All right, solar energy facility, medium and large.
I mean, we have a solar law.
Those solar side in law.
Yeah.
So I would just say S P R.
Those for sure, yeah, so, okay.
Communication tower would be the same thing.
Yeah, he's got a comment on that, right?
So the odd thing, though, was it, wasn't?
Well, that was one of his exclusions.
Guy said maybe for.
Leave it there, leave it there.
Okay, well, what about the staging, storage or parking areas as a non-residential?
There's one S U P there.
Oh, yeah, misstatement.
I think that's good to have.
Yeah.
You think it's what?
I think. No, I think the S U P. You know, I could just imagine people like, well, it's not really a junkyard, we're just parking.
And we have a well-known case. Yeah, a well-known case. That continues to be an active situation, so I, I say S U P for that.
Yeah. So now, does that take us over to vehicle body repair shop?
Uh, takes us to telecommunications.
I thought we were gonna leave.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Yes, vehicle body repair shop.
Um, what's the proposal on vehicle body repair shop?
S P R. I'm fine with S P R.
I think S P R is okay then.
Yes, P R?
Yeah.
Number thirteen. It looks like you took a lot of notes, Tim, right? Everybody did, right?
I'm, I'm just changing things in my, yeah.
Just go through and we can compare my tables, Mark, to.
And repair, oh, versus body repair.
So then veterinary clinic.
I think I. I've thought that should be S P R. I think that, that's what I would propose.
The reason that it was S U P was out of concern about scale.
Yeah, I think so.
But I think that our square footage delineation takes care of that. So I'd say S P R across the board.
All right.
And you know, this, what this is also gonna make, it's gonna make it a hell of a lot easier on the code officer.
Yeah.
Or the, or the, um. Just to review it in the first place.
Right. I mean, I think there, there were concerns about the, um. Person on the review board.
Well.
I think, I, yeah, so this will be better, right?
Okay.
Large wind energy generator. Large wind energy generating systems, not allowed anywhere.
Right.
They would have allowed him in the Admiral.
So I think we only have, we're at one other suggestion. It counts residential and that.
Oh, I had one, yeah, so.
That theme of the septic?
About what? Oh, that's case.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And then I also had one about. This allowing formula business architecture.
Right. So, should I go first or?
Go first, this this should be quick.
Yeah, so on, um. Let's see, this is on my page sixty-five, but I don't know about your page. Article five, development standards. And then you turn two pages and it's five point two B is in void. The first line says the following guidelines are encouraged, we already, I'm I'm reading the original language, we've modified it, but. Our encouragement recommended for all commercial and residential uses, but are not required. And we took part of that out, but I think we should remove in residential.
Right.
Oh.
Because it's, I I don't think it's helpful.
Right, yeah, but yeah, so, yeah, people get upset.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean. So it, right here at the top, so the following guidelines are encouraged for all commercial and residential uses, but are not required. In the Admiral District. So, I mean, I don't even know what, I I mean, I see what the point is in terms of a planning thing that like. These things would be nice for the town, but.
Yeah.
You know, when someone's building a home.
I, well, I think it's, I think it's safe because it's residential development.
Oh, that's true.
Residential development. So I think we should leave it, residential development.
Commercial and residential.
Development.
Development.
Oh, I had lost this area. I don't have the, that development in my copy, so.
I think it's.
The development's in the next sentence.
It's honestly, it's just a suggestion, I mean, that's what my objection was last meeting, was that this is just a suggestion. To take this into consideration, it can be ignored, it has no teeth, but I think.
Right, I understand, and that's why I'm questioning, well.
Okay.
If it's, since it's development, I guess I would say.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about large development.
Yeah, so maybe we leave it alone? Okay. I, you know. I'm like a a dog chasing a still, I remember doing full circle on this before, same reason, so, okay, thank you. Okay, I won't bring it up again.
Thank you. All right. Where was mine? Where's my email?
It was in the, uh. Existing septic and.
Yeah, I remember.
It's in article five, right?
Is it five, article five?
It's it should be just beyond this with the. It's what's allowed. In or or not allowed in the riparian buffers, so.
Yeah. Yeah, installations too is the only thing.
Which, so what is it, K- Kate, what number?
Uh thirty-four, so.
Five point three, section five point three. That's as far as I've got.
Where is the number?
Oh, here it is.
Five point three, okay, we crossed out three, yeah.
Five point what?
Five point three.
Might be four, I'm not seeing, oh, here's the five point three, okay. You got to change. Uh, I've got lots of things crossed out in here, the following activities are prohibited. In the buffer area. Okay, about hazardous material A. And then B is installation of sewage systems, both rain field and drainage systems, and replacement of existing subject dry wells or sewage pits. I have a problem with the replacement, that that you can't replace a septic dry well.
Right.
If it goes bad. In the hamlet. Next to the creek, that's a lot of houses, but. We don't have any public water, we can just hook in here.
I'm for changing that.
I thought we changed that.
Yeah, I mean, in environmental health is kind of.
Yeah, I thought we just got that very expensive.
Right.
Um, because we figured the health department would take care of that.
Great. Well, then maybe that's something I got missed, so let's take it out.
Yeah, let's take it out. Oh, here it is, yeah. Four, on my page seventy-two.
Oh, wait, it's probably around.
So. What are we taking out?
You had a suggestion about what to.
Taking the whole thing be out?
Right, because we we had talked about it, and we said that Tompkins County.
Environmental health.
Environmental would. Uh figure out what would be allowed.
And what would be.
Right. Cause there there are some septic that are raised in there, there are. Um, raise systems, there are some.
Let them worry about. Let them design.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right, if if we had a city water, we could put it on and not. Have to have it, and you know, ship people over slowly, but.
So is everybody in favor of removing that?
Yes.
Be, okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Um. Then him.
Yes, I'm just trying to find it. Um, this would be. Um, section six point three. It's page seventy-five that I have, but I'm a little bit off.
Yeah.
Six point three. B. Which is formula business architectural styles.
Six point seven, did you say six point three? Okay, trademark architecture for me, yeah.
I'm recommending. And this is somewhat in response to something that guy got nervous about. Taking out. Formula-based architectural styles, no trademark architecture associated with formulas business shall be allowed. The reason that I'm recommending that is because. It then says formula-based businesses shall be allowed only when the use is allowed per someone to table one and only provided to decides. According to table two and article side and cited and designed and design. Consistent with design standards. Which basically says if it's a formula business, it has to fit these design standards.
Okay, right, so it's contradicting itself.
And no, it's just that.
Redundant.
It's, it's somewhat redundant, and it also. Avoids. A formula business, saying you can't disallow us for being a formula business.
Yeah.
So I recommend taking that.
So is this, uh, all prepared and A? No, just.
All six point three.
So it's six point three.
Oh.
B one.
Okay. So you wanna take that whole thing out, or just that?
I wanna take out. Some formula based architectural styles period in the next sentence. But keep in formula-based business shall be allowed.
So you're just taking out one sentence?
Two.
Yes.
Well, but.
Yes.
And then it's not a sentence, it's not a per sentence.
Well, we could keep in formula-based architectural styles because they're allowed. Where? Right here.
Okay. Yeah, see that, I can see that. I can see that getting argued.
So you're just saying take out this sentence?
Yes. Yes, if not this header.
The second sentence.
The second sentence.
But keep the header, right?
No.
Yeah, we can keep that, I mean, the reason that the, that this is there is. To wave the flag, the community is concerned about this. But not. To say they're outright prohibited because that can get challenged for targeting.
Yeah.
As opposed to saying it just needs to conform to our standards, that's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, true, true. So it's just. They have, uh. Formula business, but they. They just adapted.
Yeah, we're not worried about the formula business, we're worried about it. Just being this ugly thing that's left behind.
It's been interesting driving, you know, since. We're working on this, like, driving through, you see a formula business, and it looks like three different stores, not like, oh. They have regulations.
Oh, right.
Right, you know, they.
So that's all I have.
Yeah. That's it.
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, what I recommend that we do is now. Cross our fingers and hope the guy gives us those revised sections. Which are just administrative, but we should really have no issues with them at all. He he just wanted to shorten them some and. Sure that they were up to date with the most recent state, blah, blah, blah.
So we, um, we went through the use table. And agreed to a bunch of changes and some language change here. Do we need to formalize that by resolution or something? Just to, or just, should we just pull this all together for next time?
Well, I'll just. Say a consent agenda based upon what we decided tonight.
Yeah.
I hereby propose a consent agenda based upon what we decided tonight. You have the notes, right?
Yeah.
For Jesse, I'll go over the use table with you to make sure that it's.
Good, okay.
Nothing got dropped out.
So you're moving that resolution?
I'm with that resolution.
Seconded by Kate, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thank you.
So, once we get section ten and eleven. You know, everybody should look at your scan in case something crops up, but we should be done.
So, um.
It's only been three years.
Um, no, so will there be another? Say, a new printed copy with all these changes that we've used?
Has to be, yeah.
A new printed copy.
So Mark, is it possible for us to have a new printed copy with all of the changes that we've adopted?
Yes. I'm working on it, so I will. Okay, I will bear down on that.
And I'll be happy to. Proof it with you, just to make sure.
Great.
Okay.
I think that'd be good.
Yes, we need to have that for, you know, posting and.
Well, also, just so we can review it to make sure that nothing got dropped through.
Exactly.
Um, did we just? Vote for Google, let's talk.
Yeah. We did. Did you vote? Tim moved it, Kate seconded it.
And you voted for it.
I did, yeah. I think it's time to go, yeah.
Except, we have business to do.
All right.
So, um, the first business is I wanna do the resolution that I promised. So I will offer a resolution. Just to state that the, um. Carrolltown Town Board, um. Approves the offering of, um. The, uh. Roth IRA contribution planned by the New York State Deferred Conversation. Um. From the town of Carroll, administered by the town of Carroll, suspected by Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, great, thank you. And then we have some, you know, procedural things, um, I have budget amendment resolutions. Um, so increasing by, uh, this is. Uh, for the broadband payment to, uh, the first payment to HUD for their work, so it's eleven thousand four hundred and forty dollars. A budget increase to expense line A eighty-nine ninety-nine point four-two, home and community services broadband and. Revenue line A twenty-three eighty-nine point one, home and community services broadband. And then, um, the next one is for just, we are the. Uh. We process the payments, uh, we don't pay for it, we just process the payments for. The youth camp, uh, the camp counselors at the Brick Down Community Center, so. Uh, that one is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents, increase A seventy-one forty point one youth summer employment expense. And increase A thirty-eight twenty. Youth programs revenue. And then, one hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and six, seven, six hundred and fifty dollars increase. D A fifty-one twelve point two improvements, capital outplay, um, and increase D A thirty-five oh one chips. The consolidated highway, um, improvement program. So that's for the the chips payment. And then four thousand seven thirty-nine dollars increase, um, D A fifty-one ten point four-two general repairs at Cruz-Cover project. And D A three oh eight nine state aid eight at Cruz-Cover project. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
By Michelle, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. And then we have a bunch of transfers, which typically happens in the last two business meetings of the year. To. Square out accounts, so I will offer the following transfers. Five hundred from A fourteen ten point two town clerk equipment to town clerk contractual, one hundred. Uh, from town board contractual to town clerk contractual. Thirty-one hundred from our contingency to, um, our legal contractual. Ninety dollars from supervisor contractual to. Public information contractual. Twelve hundred from town hall contractual to. Town hall information technology contractual. Four hundred from historian equipment to historian contractual. Three forty from. Uh, community services contractual to. Cemeteries contractual.